Welcome to the Goodyear City Council Meeting. We're excited to have you be a part of this important public process. Tonight, you will have the opportunity to address City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. The agendas and the speaker request cards are located on the tables outside of council chambers. You must fill out a speaker card in order to address the City Council. Please hand in your completed card to the city clerk before the start of the meeting. If the meeting has already begun, please hand it to any city staff. You may also check the "I do not wish to speak" option on the card. This allows you to still voice your opinion on an item on the record without having to speak. Public comment on a non-agenda item will take place during the citizen comment portion of the evening. These are items that don't appear on tonight's formal agenda. The city clerk will call your name when it's time for you to speak. At that time, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone. You'll have a maximum of three minutes, and there is a timer visible from the podium. When the light changes from green to yellow, your time is coming to an end. When the light turns red, your time is up. Note that you may also choose not to speak if other speakers before you have said what you wanted to say. Shouting, cheering, and loud noises will not be tolerated, and violators may be removed for disrupting the meeting. Goodyear City Council meetings stream live on Facebook and YouTube and online at GoodyearAZ.gov. Thank you for your participation in tonight's meeting.
I'd like to call the regular meeting to order on September 9th, 2019. Please join Councilmember Laura Tonno in the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a city, we mourn the loss of a fallen hero, retired Goodyear firefighter Austin Peck, and we will be forever grateful for his courageous service to our community. Our deepest sympathies go to his family, fellow firefighters, and friends. On behalf of the mayor and the City Council, I would ask that you please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of Austin. Dear Lord, we ask that you help us through these times. We ask that you help us make wise decisions as a council to help our citizens make Goodyear the best city for all. We ask that you give protection, and we ask that you also look over those that protect us, both at home and away. We ask that you put this veil of protection on those members because they serve us every day. We also ask that you keep Goodyear in your thoughts and prayers as we do of those in our community. In this your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Laura Tonno, for that thoughtful prayer in expressing how we feel here at the dais. All right, everyone is present, so we're going to go to the communication item tonight. And the first item is to review the 2019 summer recreation and aquatic programs. Kristin Ennis, Recreation Coordinator, and Richard Ortiz, Recreation Co. to present. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you so -- or evening, sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening about our summer highlights. I am the Recreation Coordinator over aquatics, and so I'm going to talk to you about our aquatics programs this summer, and then I'll turn it over to Richard, and he'll touch on the summer rec programs. So this summer, we hired approximately 30 aquatic staff to run and oversee our pool. So those were our lifeguards, our coaches, our swim instructors. They conducted approximately 400 hours of training throughout the summer to make sure the pool is safe and our patrons go home safe every day. We had over 38,000 pool visits, had 895 swim lesson participants. So those ranged from six months to even adult swim lessons that we offered. Our swim team participation, one of our highlights this summer was we increased by 27%. So last summer, we had 160 swim team participants. This summer, we had 221. So it was really great to see that increase. Same with our open swim, that was also increased by 15%. Other programs that we had this summer was our junior guard program. We had eight individuals who participated in that, and it's a really great program that we're trying to build so we can build a pipeline for our new rec campus. We're hoping those individuals will be lifeguards, coaches, and swimmers for when that comes. Our surveys this summer for our satisfaction, 92% said swim lessons were above average or excellent. And then here's some community feedback, feel free to read that. Pretty much a lot of individuals thought our swim lessons were outstanding. Staff were friendly, welcoming, and most of the time, they had a great, great time. Pass it off to Richard.
Hello, Mayor, Lord, and Council. My name is Richard, I'm the Recreation Coordinator, so I oversee youth and adult sports and summer camps. This year, we had a fun and a successful summer. We had three sites, which are Desert Thunder, Copper Trolls, and Sintera Mirage, which we had 582 kids combined between all three sites. We had activities such as arts and crafts, which we had forky, which is from Toy Story, pottery, some hats, we did a lot of bridges competitions. We had presentations such as Wildlife Zoo that came to visit the kids, Science on Wheels Magician, and our very own Goodyear Fire Department. We had classes such as yoga, some site challenges, and sport competitions between each sites. Everybody enjoyed it and had a great time. Our field trips this year, we did a lot of local. We actually went to our new establishment, Urban Air Adventure Park, which the kids loved. We went there twice. We went to Bolero, and we went to Harkins to see Toy Story 4, and in our very own Goodyear Community Pool, which is something we do every summer, and the kids love and enjoy. The junior leader program we had, we had about 13 junior leaders this year. All of them earned the basic job skill development, in which we teach them, basically treat them like staff, and that's how they get to earn the skills to potentially hire them when of age. So a little bit of our satisfaction ratings. We had 93%, which rated us, which is above average or excellent. And a little bit of community feedback. We had a lot of good survey results that we got back, and a lot of parents that continue to see it every single year because we fill up our summer camps in a day. And that's how popular our programs are. And then we had 97% saying that they would come back to our programs. Oops. And then at this point, I would like to take the opportunity to have our junior leaders and some of our staff in the audience to stand to be recognized. Without these individuals, we wouldn't have had a successful summer, which we enjoy every year, and we do it for the community. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation, and thank you very much.
I'm sure Council has some comments. Anybody wants to, Brandon?
Yeah, thank you so much. I think it's definitely a great benefit or a great opportunity that we give our residents, especially swim lessons. I mean, that's very important to have kids in the community being able to swim and continue that process. And then also something to do over the summer as well, which I think is just a great program. And I know a lot of parents that love our summer recreation program. I saw a line of at least 30 people deep when they, the first day opening at the community park. So, and they were raving about it, like this is the best deal you can get in the area for, over the summer. And I know my kids will be taken care of. So I think it's a great program, and I really appreciate all the students and all the people that are volunteering and making it a success. And I appreciate staff as well for making it a success as well. So thank you so much for continuing to do this, I appreciate it, thank you.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
I want to say thank you as well, and to thanks to all the young people that have stepped up and are volunteering and working. That's great life skills, and it's great, I'm sure, for the kids that go there to have younger people that they can really, you know, bond with a little bit. So I think that's just wonderful. And it's great to see all the options that you guys have and everything, and a lot of them are local now, so that's really nice to see as well. And I'm sure those kids never went home and said, "I'm bored." Guarantee you on that one, so thank you again, and thank you all.
Councilman Kano?
Well, congratulations on another successful summer. Having fun is the easy part, but you also have a tremendous responsibility to safeguard the well-being of all these children around the pool and in and out of all the places you go. So congratulations on getting everybody through. And what you're doing is providing an essential service for our community. It really has a great impact. And to our junior leaders and our lifeguards, you've stepped up to take on some responsibility that will really help you in your leadership as you go forward in your career, so thank you all.
Councilmember Vazillo?
There's not a whole lot more to add to that except then thank you for all you do for the community. The 97%, apparently the feedback, apparently they like what you're doing, and you're improving the lives of our citizens out there. So again, thank you.
Well, I think I'm the last, and nobody else wants to speak. I have to say, one day, and you filled it up. I'll tell you what, that says something about a quality program we have. The parents were looking at that right away and signed up. And thank you for all of those hours, 400 hours. Again, that's a lot of hours for young people that are off for the summer to take away from their personal time. So congratulations for your hard work. And I have a feeling, kind of have smiles on your face. Did you like it? Let's hear a cheer, did you like it? Thank you so much for the presentation, we're pleased at the numbers. Have a great evening. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. And we do have some speaker cards, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. Tom Shannon?
I will say before the next speaker, this is a very serious subject. The number of people are going to be coming up, and very difficult in a time that we aren't allowed to say anything by state statute. So I just, I want that announced to the people. If we seem to be bland in our expressions and our verbal, is no verbal. So welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Council, Vice Mayor Stipp, and City Manager. My name is Tom Shannon, I'm not a Goodyear resident, but I am the proud uncle of Austin Peck. And we do thank you for your well wishes and your thoughts at the beginning of council tonight. What I would like to do is thank not only all of you, but the city of Goodyear in its entirety for the care and warmth that was shown to Austin over the last nearly four years. Of course, I am a big fan of the fire service in general, I'm a 32-year firefighter, but I cannot tell you what a class organization you have in your fire department, led by, of course, Chief Luizium, prior to that, Chief Gaylord. The fire service is unique in that we are a ferocious family, and we come together during difficult times. Certainly, Austin's fight, Gilbert's fight, and Landon's fight have been experiences that galvanized the Goodyear Fire Department. And your firefighters and your fire department showed such extraordinary support for Austin during his fight. This young man never went without a paycheck. It had a lot to do with the benefits that are afforded to him as a city employee, but also as a result of the firefighters themselves making him whole every two weeks. This family, my family, simply was overwhelmed by the support that he received from the city. You are right, Madam Mayor, this is a serious topic, and it is one that's evolving. Illness and cancer in particular in the fire service is relatively new studied disease process. We always knew that firefighters were at risk and were potentially hurt on the job. But now, the science for us is essentially undeniable. We have great legislation that has been afforded to us that identifies the known cancers that can be contracted while on the job. And it is a scary, scary concept for cities to know that they're putting some of their employees in harm's way and without any ability to change that. The call's going to come, and they're going to go. Your fire department is absolutely top-notch in terms of what they do to make sure that their members are safe. I'm quite sure that they're going to continue to do that in the future. And so finally, I'll close with this. What would happen over the last four days, or really the last seven days, was monumental. Those things are planned usually over months, and that would not have happened without everybody jumping in. I cannot thank Chief Hughes from the Police Department for his support. I will conclude with just a final thank you.
All right, you can finish your statement.
That's okay, I'll just conclude with a final thank you. This is the best of the fire service, what we saw over the last weekend, and public safety in general. And I read each of your bios, and I know almost to a person you support public safety, and I want to thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, Paul Boyer. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. My name is State Senator Paul Boyer. I represent Glendale and North Phoenix. Been in the legislature for, going on my eighth year. I wanted to echo a thank you for what you've done for Austin. I don't know all the details, but what I do know is we're all very appreciative for what you've done for him. Now, we're simply asking for you to do the right thing for Gilbert, for Gilbert Aguirre, another firefighter who you know who has contracted cancer on the job. His cancer was on the original presumption list from 2001. I'm very familiar with it because I wrote, and I championed, and sponsored the updated version in 2017 that added several cancers based on all of the evidence, all the science that we could justify, which is why we included those particular cancers. As the sponsor, I can tell you what the intent was. And I can tell you that every single member who voted for it, and the very tiny few that voted against it, we all knew what that was. So it passed the House 54 to 4, passed the Senate 27 to 3. And we all knew that what we were voting on was when a firefighter gets one of those cancers, that they would be covered, point blank. That's not just my opinion, that's also the opinion of the governor, and also the opinion of the Attorney General, State Attorney General Mark Bernovich, who has now written, counting three letters, on behalf of our position. The Industrial Commission as well of Arizona, and I've provided the copy of the text, the relevant statute for all the council members. They issued a statement, and I'll just read it to you very briefly. See, and then I quote, "According to ARS 231061G," which you have in front of you, "insurance carriers," which is what you have, "and self-insured entities may accept a claim at any point," end quote. And so, given my time, I'm not going to read it to you, you have it there in front of you. Your particular carrier is Copper Point, and Copper Point works for you, not the other way around. And so, they do have a duty to do right, to be fair to those who, in this case, has contracted a sickness on the job, which Gilbert has. And you have a duty to your employer, employee, excuse me, to do the right thing by him. And so, all we're asking for you to do is to do the right thing morally and legally. I've known Gilbert for years, he's never once complained. Firefighters are always there for us on our worst day. And so, the only thing we ask, I ask, is that you support Gilbert on his worst day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mark Peck.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Lord, Vice Mayor Stipp. I am not a Goodyear resident, but I am the father of Austin Peck, who passed last Saturday. I do live in Cave Creek at 2750 East Tanya Road, where the kids grew up and with their families. He was an 11-year veteran of the Fire Department of Goodyear. He did have a carcinoma, synonasal undifferentiated carcinoma, which related to adenocarcinoma on the 2001 presumptive list. On the 2017 presumptive list, they jumped in Ferinx cancer, which this is a Ferinx cancer. Austin still yet fought against that in the workman's comp court, being denied five times. I wanted a chance to thank Goodyear, the city of Goodyear, for our family's gratitude. You enabled Austin to accomplish healing with his family. In the name of his fire brotherhood and sisters, and for the city of Goodyear, you gave him a chance to recover, and he fought hard, he fought really hard. Your HR department, your fire department, your police department, all bent over backwards and sideways to do hospital visits and take his shifts and rearrange schedules or even rules, I think, at the HR department to allow him to heal and sometimes come back to work. As we all know, Austin, along with other cancer afflicted brothers and sisters in fire police and first response, are not only fighting for their cancers, they're fighting for their lives, they're fighting for their insurance, and they're fighting for their benefits for their children and the families beyond death. The support that Goodyear has lent is truly remarkable and so very appreciated. I want you to know that felt heartily. There's a lot that Austin wanted in his fight, and as you are aware, it's a lot. Very difficult, difficult situations with no answers. Our family's basic need and want is to fill Austin's need and want himself to work hand in hand and heart in heart with Goodyear and his fire brotherhood and his police cohorts to create a solid cancer rule and regulation to allow employees to heal and fight in the background, and Goodyear taking the foreground in admin and changing the healing process. To do this, Goodyear would take the lead in changing cancer healing in first responders and peace officers and firefighters for the whole nation. And it needs to start, and I do appreciate everything you've done. And I appreciate the response to our letter months and months ago from you, Mr. Lord. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Stephen Gilman?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As you can tell, it's been an emotional week for us. I cannot thank you guys enough for reaching out to us and offering your condolences to the Peck family and to our brother, Austin Peck. I only have three minutes, so I cannot begin to tell you of everybody that I have to thank up here. The other fire departments that reached out and provided apparatus to run the procession of our brother, Austin Peck. The other police departments in particular, the Goodyear Police Officers Association and the Goodyear Police Department. And of course, our own membership and fire department stepped up huge. As you've heard, this was planned in a very short amount of time, and I think we honored our brother accordingly. So I can't thank all the businesses and the community that reached out enough that helped raise money for our brother's family. We will have time at some point, hopefully, to acknowledge everybody that participated and thank. But right now, what I really want to talk about, much like Chief Shannon and much like Mr. Peck, is I want to, from the bottom of my heart, thank our city, our city management, our staff for working with us. I think we've identified a problem. The system failed our brothers during the workman's comp process. Copper Point's system failed by allowing an independent medical examiner and Dr. Salgonic, who has never ruled in favor of firefighter, to rule against our brothers. And I am proud that our city has agreed and identified that there's an issue that we need to work to fix. And it brings me great joy that this city offers a collaborative process for us to voice our concerns. This is not Glendale. This is a city that works together, and I am proud to say that you guys are on board to work with us, the city management is on board to work with us. And I am very hopeful that we will reach a resolution in the future for our brother Gilbert Aguirre and possibly Austin Peck, that we can fix this problem, right the wrong that we've encountered. So again, on behalf of United Goodyear Firefighters, thank you for working with us. Thank you for working with us in the future, and we look forward to a resolution soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, another subject, so I see that you have, would you like to announce the next one, please? Mark Pelletier?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Mark Pelletier, 15742 West Fairmount. I want to apologize to the fire community for bringing something of a different nature. I realize, you know, their situation is quite important, I don't mean to take away from that. I want to comment briefly on the Bullard Wash situation. There's no need to reiterate what the situation, everyone's aware of it. It's an ongoing problem that's continuing to affect three communities, at least three communities within Pebble Creek. I realize certainly that the problem is not a creation of the city of Goodyear, and the city of Goodyear's capability to react to it is limited. However, certainly at least, or Channel 15 reports last August, there were reports, quoting a city official, of some things related to this that the city had done and planned to do. My issue is, our HOA has not met since July, and they don't meet again till October. I'm sure you folks would like to have that the summer off, and that isn't under your constraint as well. But my issue is, there is silence from the HOA, and there is silence from the city on this topic. This is at least the third city council meeting where residents have come and talked about this. And with all due respect, thank you for your comments is no longer good enough. I know you can't answer me here, I know you can respond to criticism or a request to put something on a schedule, or that's within your purview. So I don't come here to criticize, but my question is, can there not be, is there not some way the city can communicate to the community? Obviously, a city council meeting is not the best venue. Is there some way, there can be some communication on what the city does know, what the city has been able to do, and what the city can do? We're operating in a vacuum, thank you.
You're welcome. So can I make a request to the City Manager to respond to his remarks in a letter form? And with the addition of possibly updating him on anything, you know, in the process that we've been using?
Yes, Mayor, we'd be pleased to do so, we have a contact information here.
All right, great, thank you very much. Is that the end of the cards?
It was, Mayor.
All right. So we're going to go to the consent agenda, with the city clerk, please read Consent Agenda, Items 2 through 6 by title only, please.
Approval of Minutes. Number 3, approve the use of budgeted fiscal year 2020 funds for the purchase of a wastewater collection CCTV vehicle. Number 4, recommend approval of a new Series 12 liquor license for booties, wings, burgers, and beer. Number five, adopt resolution number 2019-1996, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute all documents necessary to enter into the emergency base station agreement between Banner Health and City of Goodyear, serving as an advanced life support ALS-based medical facility for the fire department. Number six, authorize city manager to accept two exclusive water line easements and to execute the release and termination of easement terminating an existing water line easement over the portion of an existing water line easement described in the release and termination of easement.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, could I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items two, two through six? Do I hear the motion? All right, I heard a motion from Councilman Campbell and a second from Vice Mayor Stip. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, let's go on to number seven, where I have a public hearing tonight, is to consider the draft land assumption and infrastructure improvement plan. I'm going to open the public hearing. Lori Rigemrough, Finance, Manager, Budget, and Research will be presenting. Lori?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Here today to talk to you about an ongoing project to update the existing impact fees that the city has recently adopted. As we were working on the last process, there are some interests in developing south of the geographic area currently included in our impact fee areas began to arise. And however, it could not be incorporated into the process we were in because we are on a statutory deadline to complete that update within five years of when those original fees were adopted. So there's also a development agreement out there that outlines some of what is included in this particular update. And we are also, part of this process is we are following those same state requirements that we went through in the last year and a half apply in a case of updating the plan to add a new geographic area. So this is the first in many of those steps that we'll be going through. Kind of just to go to, we'll start at the end. Essentially, we did complete an update of the existing plan. An IIP is the infrastructure improvement plan, and the LUAs the land use assumptions. Developing that plan and posting that plan is the first step in the process. We worked with the same consultant we worked with in the last process. Staff provided updates to the infrastructure that we currently had in the plan. And we looked at the areas of police, fire, and streets. And there's no change in the major infrastructure that's included in this plan update. Essentially, it's just extending the plan out a couple of, a year or so. Oops. Wrong button. The scope of the study was limited to, well, we explored whether we would create a new impact fee area versus extending existing geographic areas. Ultimately, in looking at that, it made more sense to extend the existing south area for police and fire into this geographic area because it's contiguous to that area as well as streets. I'm sorry, it's streets and fire are the south extension. Police is the citywide extension. Those services to this newer area would be provided by the same infrastructure that's included in those plans. Water, wastewater, and parks were not included in this update. Any development that would occur in that area would require that the development provide the water, wastewater, and parks. And there would not be impact fee credits involved in that, and there would not be impact fees charged. This is just a depiction of the area that is being added to the plan. Essentially, it's the areas where the city expects there might be development in the next 10 years in that area that are within our current corporate limits. So we could not include something that was not already part of our annexed areas. This just gives you the picture of the citywide impact fees, that areas where impact fees currently cover. Again, they don't cover our entire city. The lighter color on the top is what we now call the north area. The blue area in the middle is the existing south. And the little green area at the bottom is that area I just showed you that we're adding. And I'll just remind you again that in no one of these areas does water and wastewater cover the entire area. So within these areas, there are smaller areas that apply to water and wastewater. And of course, no water and wastewater or parks in the green area. So what's required in the statute is that we look at both land use and we look at infrastructure. So we looked at our last plan, which was based on the MAG data. And then we also looked at forecasts by the developer for what might happen in this general area in the coming 10 years. And we struck a balance between what the developer's forecast was and what our analysis would be relative to using MAG and other data that's available. And came up with what we're showing there as the residential units and population growth that were used then to extend the plan. So in terms of infrastructure, as I noticed earlier, we haven't included any new infrastructure in terms of types of infrastructure or major pieces of infrastructure. In the case of fire, that same Station 180 Sticks that's in the current plan would also serve that area. So it's simply using that same infrastructure in the plan, a fire apparatus. The police projects, the same projects. In many cases, much of this infrastructure was not fully consumed by the plan that we already have in place. So it's just taking some more incremental use of those particular facilities. Because again, we have to build them long before they're actually fully absorbed by growth. And in terms of streets, it's those same projects of the intersection improvement at Australia Parkway and Cotton Lane, as well as the bridge widening on Australia. So in all cases, the fees are not changing from the current plan. Again, mainly that's because we already had infrastructure that wasn't fully consumed. For every person you add, it added an equal proportion of that particular type of infrastructure. So in the new area called Northwest Rainbow Valley for the purposes of impact fees, the police citywide fee would be extended to that area at the same $820 that currently exist. The fire south fee would be extended at $971 and street south at $3,330. And these are the residential single-family fees. In this area, water, wastewater, and parks would not be applicable. So their total impact fees would be lower than the other areas. But again, developers in that area would provide that other forms of infrastructure. And then just to provide you that similar information we used in the last update on the non-residential, these are the same three project types we used before. Again, you'll see in the rest of south, the fees are not changing. In the Northwest Rainbow Valley area, the fees will be lower, again, as a result of excluding water, wastewater, and parks. It's the same fee for the other categories of infrastructure. Where we are in the process now, we were required to post the plan that lays out the land use assumptions and the infrastructure. We posted that on July 1st. We had a stakeholder meeting on July 31st, similar to what we'd done before. We reached out to the same mailing list we were using, as well as the developers that we knew were interested in the area. At that stakeholder meeting, we had six members of the public appear, answered their questions. They were primarily about the prior plan and some of the assumptions we'd made in that. Today, we're here doing the required public hearing. We will be back in October to have you adopt this plan. And then we begin the fee part of the process, where we post the fees, hold a public hearing, adopt the fees, and go through the waiting period before those fees go into effect. So with that, that's a brief summary of the plan that we're asking you to consider in October and to take any public comment on today.
Thank you very much, Lori. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Then this is the hearing of, the first hearing of several steps to extend the area of the city covered by impact fees. No action will be taken tonight. I will now close this public hearing. All right, let's go to the business again. Thank you, Lori, for the presentation. I'd like to remind Council now on the business section to wait for the motion and the second before discussion. The first item on business is to name the future recreation campus. So Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, is coming forth along with, I guess, Mr. Beadle's not coming, just you're going to be presenting at this part, all right, so. Nathan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So just to follow up to our work session this evening, we are asking for your consideration in naming the future recreation campus. Just a quick timeline, we're getting closer to the opening in summer of 2021. Tonight before you, we're asking for your consideration in naming the recreation campus. How did we get here? A great deal of public input. And so we had a comprehensive outreach plan that generated 412 entries for public names. Those names, those 412 entries were then narrowed down to 11 by a cross-departmental city committee. And from there, it was passed to the Parks and Recreation Commission, who had the very difficult job of trimming that list from 11 down to three. And I do mean difficult. They spent well over two hours in that process. And we do have Raquel Landfield, who's with the Parks and Recreation Commission, who's joining us here this evening. So Raquel, if I can, let me say hello. There she is. Very good. And so the three names that we discussed earlier were Goodyear Recreation Campus, Oasis Recreation Campus, and Star Mountain Recreation Campus. And after the discussion, after the work session, I believe we've landed with the Goodyear Recreation Campus. And so we, there were, you know, we talked about that a park name should create comfort by creating a sense of familiar being, by describing what takes place there. And we feel that the recreation campus does just that. And so it will provide a sense of mutual understanding for residents and visitors. And with that, tonight, I'm asking that you officially consider naming the future recreation campus as the Goodyear Recreation Campus.
Thank you, Nathan. Can I have a motion in a second to approve the Goodyear Recreation Campus as the name for the future recreation campus? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I, with that by Council, I heard a motion by Councilman Hampton and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All, let's vote on it then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on business, to consider approving the expenditure authority up to $3,946,100 to complete the pavement management projects in various locations throughout the city and related budget transfer. Luke Albert, City Traffic Engineer, and Brian Harville, Pavement Manager, Management Coordinator, presenting. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we're requesting your approval of a budgeted expenditure of approximately $3.9 million, of which it's about $3.3 million in the city funds. In addition, there's about $450,000 from APS as part of a cost-sharing agreement for Riggs Road and Bullard Avenue, as well as about $179,000 from Southwest Gas for the impacts to Litchfield Road during this gas line work during the past six months or so. So they have a responsibility to fund the treatment on the half of the road that they've impacted. This graphic shows the city's pavement condition impact, sorry, pavement condition index during the past six fiscal years, which going back to FY14, which was when we first increased the funding for pavement management. Pavement Condition Index is an industry standard metric that basically measures the overall health of the roadway that it's measuring. We began back in 2014 with the Pavement Condition Index for the citywide network of about 68. And right now, at the end of the FY19 projects, we're at about 76. So we've been able to really increase that nicely during the past six fiscal years with the funding support from city council. Next, on the next few slides, Brian here, who is our pavement management coordinator and really the expert on these projects, is going to talk about the treatments, as well as the roadway key plans on treating. I'll turn to Brian.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So these first four slides will demonstrate examples of preservation treatments being utilized in FY20. This photo is of Avalon Drive, taken from inside the community park facing Litchfield Road. On the left, on the left side is the before picture. And as you can see, this was in low fair condition. On the right side, on the after picture, this was taken more than a year later, just a few weeks ago. And as you can see, it's performing very well. This next slide is of Litchfield Road between MC85 and Lower Buckeye Road. This is an example of a fractured aggregate surface treatment. This had not received a treatment in between 15 to 20 years. The road was exhibiting extreme alligator cracking and ravelling and was in a very poor condition. Because of its use as a low-volume industrial road, this was a low priority. In a higher traffic area, this road would have justified a reconstruction at approximately $35 a square yard. Because of its usage, we have been able to apply a fast at a fraction cost. Cerrable Road between MC85 and Yuma Road, this is an example of a high-volume cape seal consisting of a high-volume fast topped with a microsurface. This road ranged from fair to poor condition and was exhibiting ravelling and large amounts of crack. Next, we have an example of a high-density mineral bond. This neighborhood street is in Cerrable Village and was demonstrating mild cracking, but was in overall fair condition. The high-density mineral bond was applied in two coats and is warranted by the contractor for five years, with a life expectancy of seven years. The next three slides will show this year's FY20 preservation plan. This map shows the scheduled treatments in the northmost part of the city for FY2020. This purple area will be treated with a high-density mineral bond. We will be applying a microsurface to the orange highlighted areas. And the blue areas will receive a high-volume cape seal consisting of high-volume fast followed by a microsurface treatment. Next, we have a map of the more central area of our city. Again, the blue highlighted road will be receiving high-volume fast. The purple area will be receiving a high-density mineral bond. The last map is of the southern portion of the city. Here, we will be applying a high-density mineral bond to the numerous purple shaded neighborhoods across EMR. On the inlay map is Riggs Road from 187th to Bullard Avenue. And, excuse me. And Bullard Ave from Riggs Roads to the end of Payment. These are the roads being treated in a shared project with APS. These red shaded roads will receive a high-volume fast on top of a scrub seal. We recommend approval of the budget expenditures of up to $3,946,100 for the FY2020 pavement management projects at various locations throughout the city. At this point, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Could I have a motion in a second to approve the expenditure authority up to $3,946,100 to complete the pavement management projects in various locations throughout the city and related budget transfers? Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilmember, Vice Mayor Stip. And a second from, yeah, I'll give you the second, or a second from Councilman Cano. Open for council discussion? Councilman Pizzillo?
Just, just a general comment. I appreciate the software that you're using and how you're able to go through the city, score the roads. Obviously, we have limited resources, and take those resources and maximize that improvement on there. So I appreciate all your efforts since you put that software in place and making the roads a little safer and better for our residents throughout the community. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
It's very refreshing since 2014 when we said, hey, we've got to take care of what we have, to see the score now, these six fiscal years later. Obviously, an indication of a job well done and appreciate the efforts that you do. I know the residents appreciate it. One of the things Councilmember Pizzillo continues to talk about is everyone saying what a high-quality community it looks like, and it, and it is, and it is directly related to things like the street preservation program and many of the other things that you two are particularly responsible for. So thank you.
Any other comments? I have to agree with both comments. We greatly appreciate it. The inroads that you've made, the advancements since the very beginning. And some of it came because of complaints, remember that, and things we've gone through with that. And I know that we still have some other areas that people were concerned about, but we've got it on the schedule. We're going to get, take care of it eventually. So thank you. So let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, gentlemen. All right, now we're down to the information items. Does council have any commendation reports? Anything to offer at this moment? None? You look like you're doomed. Brandon, go ahead.
I just want, I just want to say thank you to the staff. I saw that Lilac Street near the 303 got, they got the pavement connected. So now people from Canyon Trails Oasis can safely cross the 303 at that light there. So I just saw that, that was our section of the area there. So a lot of residents were very, very happy about that. So thank you for completing that section. Thank you.
You're smiling. Do you have a question or a comment? Oh, okay. All right, so, yes, Councilman Cano?
In kind of view of the topic that came up tonight, I just wanted to share with the rotation of the Chair of the Public Safety Retirement Board in, here in Goodyear, to help me understand, we've been, talked with Darcy about process mapping all the steps. And so that way, we can see the decision points and time things. And so I think that'll be an additional helpful tool as we're looking at our public safety holistically.
Any other comments? All right, city manager, we do have some requests from the dais. Do you want to take that before your report? So Councilman Loretano, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just like to get an update for all of us in council as we build the new fire stations and we order new fire trucks. The preventative measures that we're putting in those, that whatever's changed with technology, so we can see what kind of preventative measures to protect our firefighters that we're doing. I think that would be a good update for us. So thank you.
Any other requests of the city managers? All right, we have the floor now.
Thank you. I have three exciting announcements that I'd like to share with council this evening. The first is this Friday, we have Ballet Under the Stars, and we want to invite the public to join the Goodyear Arts and Culture Commission for the annual Ballet Under the Stars event this Friday, 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Australia Lakeside Amphitheater. The ballet performance begins at 7:00. It's a free community event, bringing the professional ballet company Ballet Arizona to the beautiful lakeside location. The event includes food for purchase from our local food truck vendors, free face painting, youth art activity, and artwork on display for enjoyment. Noted to bring a chair and a blanket to enjoy the outdoor performance. Second announcement is the 9/11 Memorial and Pancake Breakfast, which will be held on Sunday, September 15th, by the United Goodyear Firefighter Charities in conjunction with the Goodyear Fire and Police Departments. They're hosting the annual memorial ceremony Sunday, September 15th, to honor the fallen, encourage remembrance, and this marks the 18th anniversary, if you can believe it, of the September 11 terrorist attacks. The morning will begin with a flag-raising ceremony at 7:30 AM at Fire Station 183, followed by a short memorial service and a free pancake breakfast. Donations for the United Goodyear Firefighter Charities will be accepted. There'll also be fire and police apparatus displays and demonstrations, public safety education, and some fun recreational activities for the families. And last but not least, Ballet Metro has announced that they will be holding an ADA assessment event in Goodyear for the Southwest Valley residents. This is a one-day event to conduct the Americans with Disabilities Act free assessments on September 25th, which is a Wednesday, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM at the Adelante Healthcare Center. Residents can make an appointment by calling for ADA certification, and we'll put all the information on our website for residents to be able to call and make appointments. That concludes my comments.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we have a special meeting as soon as I adjourn this meeting. The next meeting after that will be a work session on September 16th, 2019 at 5:00 PM. There will be no further business to discuss. This meeting is adjourned. And now I'd like to call the special media order on September 9th, 2019. We are all here. Council upon roll call may vote to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A3N4. Discussion and consultation for legal advice with this.